Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am calling to order this special meeting of the council of the town of Oakville. This meeting has been called for the purposes of updating council and the public on the Glen Abbey Golf Course application matter. Madam Clerk, I understand we have regrets from Counselor Duttick. And counsel, do we have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Madam Clerk, I see none. We have a registered delegation this evening in the person of Mr. Fraser Damoff. Mr. Damoff, would you like to come to the central podium and share your information with counsel?
Thank you, Mayor Burton and counsel, for convening this special meeting tonight about Glen Abbey Golf Course. I just wanted to come and give a bit of an update on, I should say, who I am here with. I am a resident as well as on behalf of Save Glen Abbey Coalition. So we just wanted to come and give a bit of an update and let counsel know about the support that there is for the heritage and cultural assessments being done for the Glen Abbey Golf Course. We've had two peaceful protests outside of Glen Abbey and collected 4,000 signatures on our petition. And the overwhelming message is that there is support to look at the cultural, you know, assessment or value of Glen Abbey Golf Course. And I know that no, and we all know that there's no decisions being made tonight. But again, we just wanted to relay our support for those assessments. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak, and we look forward to working with you throughout this process over the next year or so.
Thank you. Mr. Damoff, are you aware that the studies to determine the outcome of a possible cultural heritage landscape designation are not complete yet?
Of course, that's, and we obviously are showing support for these studies. Not that they're complete, but just that I think it's the right way to go.
So you understand that counsel is determined not to make decisions until all the evidence is before it?
Yes, you've told me that before.
Thank you very much, Mr. Damoff. Apparently, one of my messages is getting out. That's good. I turn now to the staff to lead off tonight's update, and we'll call on Commissioner Jane Closey.
Mayor, members of council, as you had said, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this meeting is to provide an update on Glen Abbey. Glen Abbey is an important site within the town. It has been recognized as the home of the Canadian Open, and as such has garnered Oakville national and international attention through that venue. But also, it is an integral part of the surrounding community. It was integral to the original planning of the community. And so, in the context of a development application coming in, it's very important that staff look at the current planning, policies, and legislative framework, so that we can adequately evaluate an application. Bringing evidence back to council needs to be solidly based on land use planning principles, good land use planning principles, as well as technical information. So that is what we've been endeavoring to do throughout this process. Tonight, what we wanted to do is provide you an update, first from Mr. Simeoni, our Director of Planning, who will provide an update on the planning elements that are underway, not yet completed, but they are underway. And secondly, there has been quite a bit of legal action that's been attracted to this by the applicant. And so Doug Carr, our town solicitor, was going to set out some of the current legal appeals that are underway for your information. And then I would return with just an update on what we have been doing for the public in order to provide information. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Simeoni.
Thank you, Your worship, members of council. Just as a brief update to remind ourselves where we've been and where we're going with respect to various matters, as it applies to the Glen Abbey Golf Course and the town's interim control bylaw, and of course, three studies that are being undertaken as we speak. It was approximately one year ago that council passed an interim control bylaw as it applies to the Glen Abbey property. And this was done to allow a pause, to allow the municipality an opportunity to consider various matters that were necessary to fully understand the policy context within which any changes to the land use designations for Glen Abbey would be considered. You will recall the three studies were urban structure review, and I'll speak a bit about that in the next few slides. Again, land use, economic and impact analysis, I'll provide you more detail on that. And the cultural heritage landscape review, which to some extent had been started before the 2016 date. Also note, the council extended the interim control bylaw in November of this year, reminding ourselves that there's, we need the time to complete the studies, but also time to consider the necessary implementation tools that may result as a result of the completion of the studies. So let's look at the urban structure review. I know that many of you sit on the livable Oakville Committee of Subcommittee of Council that's helped guiding the official plan review, and you are very aware that we're well along with the urban structure review. For those who aren't familiar, urban structure review is a very high level, looking at the municipality, looking at structural elements and one we would expect to see here in perhaps 100 years from now. Things like transportation networks, natural heritage systems, significant land features, land uses, et cetera. So the question that we're posing as we do our official plan review and we consider the urban structure review, what should that structure for the municipality look like as we go forward? This study was identified in the staff report that was dealt with by council on February the 1st. Study was initiated on the 16th by way of a presentation to the livable Oakville Subcommittee as part of the official plan review, and then work program started to ramp up during the spring and into the fall. Right now, we've just finished a presentation at livable Oakville. And in November, sorry, November of 16, we also had a series of public open houses. The next step is targeted to be an urban structure framework and directions report, framework and directions report, expected to go to livable Oakville in March of this year. The next study we identified was the land use, economic, and impact analysis. As we know, Glen Abbey has a role to play in the town's overall economic development strategy. There is a relationship between its role and land use. The study is meant to examine the economic impact and tourism function of the existing and planned function of the Glen Abbey Golf Course, in addition also the expected benefits, if any, from a proposed redevelopment of the subject property. The council identified the study as being necessary at the meeting of February 2016, and consultants were fully engaged and work commenced in June and July of last year. We're looking for initial draft expected in early 2017. The last study that we're undertaking, as support in the background while the interim control bylaw is in effect, is the cultural heritage landscape review. I'll remind council that this was a strategy that council embarked on in January of 2014, when it identified and undertook the cultural heritage landscape strategy, which was approved by council at that time. Phase one was completed in February of last year and identified an inventory of all public and private potential cultural heritage landscapes throughout the town. A larger number of properties were identified, a smaller amount, being eight, went into the phase two portion, or phase one portion. Glen Abbey is one of those properties. And this, again, predated any, any, any of the interim control bylaw information or processes. The next phase is the cultural heritage landscape assessments, which are expected to be completed in the, in the next early part of this year. And once those are completed, we'll be able to look at what, if any, implementation tools would be necessary to preserve the heritage resources, if any, are identified in the properties that are currently being reviewed. So let's take a second and look at the map I provided you on the screen, just to give us a sense of where we're at. You will recall that in November of 2015, there was a pre-consultation which proposed a range of units and certain dwelling types. In November of last year, 2016, an actual application was submitted to the town. And it proposed a number of units. If you can turn your mind to the screen, you can see where the cursor is moving. The indication we have is there's 141 single detached dwellings in the areas that I'm highlighting here. Then you'll see a brown, the brown color that I'm looking at, this represents approximately 2,782 apartment-style dwellings. And then the lighter browns here, and then on the southerly limits, sort of in this area, actually here, represents the approximate 299 townhomes, that stacked townhouses, in all forms of townhouses, as we see it. You'll also note that there's a commercial and office use in the north part by what's known as the stables, and again, in the more southerly central part of the site. And then there's a community hub feature identified in the middle. So this represents the reality of the application as it was submitted in November. Now, by, one of the roles of council is to determine whether or not an application is complete, and that authority has been delegated to the Director of Planning. And in that capacity, reviewed the application as submitted and determined it was incomplete for the purposes of a complete application, and that was decided on December the 8th of this year. I believe this is the part I turn it over to our solicitor, Mr. Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Mayor Burton and members of council, as council has heard and is aware, it passed an interim control bylaw on February the 1st, 2016, restricting the use of the Glen Abbey Golf Course to its existing uses only, pending the completion of the three studies that Mr. Simeoni has described, the urban structure review, the land use economic and impact analysis, and the cultural heritage landscapes assessment of the Glen Abbey Golf Course. That bylaw was extended by council on November the 1st, 2016, such that the restriction on uses on the site now applies to January the 31st, 2018, which is the limit under the Planning Act for how long an interim control bylaw may apply to a site. As you've heard, the purpose of such a bylaw is to serve as a kind of pause on any further development on the lands to which the bylaw applies until the town has completed and implemented a review or study it has undertaken in respect of land use, planning policies in the municipality affecting the lands. The landowner, Club Link, has appealed both the initial interim control bylaw and its extension. Those appeals have been consolidated and will be heard by the Ontario Municipal Board commencing on January the 30th, being Monday of next week. This hearing deals only with the issue of the interim control bylaws passed by the town, and specifically whether there was a valid planning justification for those bylaws, and whether it was appropriate that they applied only to the Glen Abbey Golf Course lands. The board hearing next week will not deal with any other issue or matter concerning the Glen Abbey Golf Course site, other than the interim control bylaws that were passed by the town as they applied to the site. More specifically, the board will not be hearing next week any issue or argument regarding the development applications for the lands that were filed by Club Link with the town on November the 10th, 2016. With respect to those applications, the legislation enables the municipality to determine if all the information specified by the Planning Act and all additional information required by the town to process the applications has been provided. On December the 8th, 2016, as you've heard, the town's Director of Planning Services, exercising delegated authority, concluded that the development applications as submitted were not complete, for the reasons as set out in a letter attached as Appendix A to the staff report this evening, to the landowners' planning consultants. On December the 12th, 2016, in response to that letter, Club Link's solicitors wrote to the board to request the board to hear a motion to determine the completeness of its development applications. They also requested that such motion be heard together with the board hearing on the interim control bylaw commencing on January the 30th. The town opposed that consolidation, and the board agreed. So those two matters will not be heard together next week. A date for the hearing of Club Link's motion regarding whether its development applications are complete has not yet been set by the board, but is anticipated to be heard sometime between March and June. The outcome of that motion regarding the completeness of the Club Link application also has a bearing on the timeframes under the Act for making a decision on the development applications that have been filed. Since the timeframes under the legislation, namely 120 days in the case of applications for zoning bylaw amendments, and 180 days in the case of applications for official plan amendments and plans of subdivision, only start to run from the filing of complete Finally, Club Link also appealed against the application fees that were submitted with its development applications. But that appeal is unlikely to be pursued until after the board has dealt with the completeness issue. So in brief, mayor and members of council, that's an outline of the current status of legal proceedings involving the Glen Abbey Golf Course site. If council has any questions in respect of this part of the presentation or on any other legal issues, I've asked Rod Northey of Gowling's and Mr. Rob Howe of Goodman's, who we've retained with respect to the development applications part of the file, to be present this evening to assist as required. However, depending on whether the question seeks advice that may be privileged and confidential, we may request an opportunity to respond in closed session, should council so determine, but we're available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr. Counsel, do you have questions at this point? Counselor Chisholm, then Counselor O'Meara.
Thank you, Your worship. My question is with respect to the two interim bylaws. We have one, and we have two. And they didn't want to combine them. The OMB has refused that consolidation. Now, does it go back, does it go back to the hearing where they deal with interim one, the first one, or the second one? How did they deal with that? I'm a little confused.
Yes, through, through you, Mayor Burton, the, the passage of the interim control bylaw in February of 2016 and its extension in November of 2016, to make the total interim period of two years, have been consolidated together to be heard next week, starting on January the 30th. What I was trying to explain to council is the issue of the interim control bylaws, being the initial passage and its extension, is not being consolidated with the issue of the completeness of the application, which Club Link has also requested that the board make a determination on. So the only, the interim control bylaws next week, the completeness issue, there's a date yet to be set by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Counselor O'Meara.
Thank you, Your worship. Just a quick question. Do you know how long we're expecting the hearing to be next week? That starts on the 30th?
Through you, Mayor Burton, the hearing was initially set for 10 days, but due to scheduling, scheduling issues of the board, we know for sure it's been set for all of next week, so the five days. And then, I believe, two days of the following week, and the two days of that week escaped me at the moment. I want to say February 7th and 9th, but it's scheduled for seven days.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Could staff provide an indication of the current planning status of the lands? How, how are they currently noted in our official plan? How might that be different from other golf courses in, in Oakville?
The Glen Abbey site is currently designated as private open space. It has a specific policy on it that allows a hotel to operate on the site in combination with the golf course. It has some also very specific policies that will allow for the regeneration of the golf course through the zoning bylaw. It is quite unique when you look at the other golf course sites within the town. And I'll, I'll go directly to the Saw Wet Golf Course, which is also designated as private open space. It has a very site-specific policy on it, or a specific policy in the livable Oakville Plan, which identifies it as a special study area and allows for redevelopment to be considered on that site through a very comprehensive review of all the lands within the area. The other site that I'll identify, which is a golf course in the town as well, is the executive, the, the site on Sixth Line. It is designated as a private open space as well. It has no site-specific policies on it, although there are a number of natural features that traverse the site itself. So those, I think, are the three remaining golf courses. In addition, there is the Deerfield Golf Course as well on the North Service Road, which is in the Parkway Belt West area at this point in time, and that would be its designation within our plan.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Elgar.
Well, now that you have started comparing golf courses, I'm just wondering if you could explain to us about our 2031 forecast numbers, and whether we were able to meet those numbers without Saw Wet and Glen Abbey?
The 2031 numbers, we had when we'd undertaken the livable Oakville review, identified how we could provide for that population and plan for that population. So if all those developments were to come to fruition within that time period, then we could achieve the, the population targets for 2031. They are forecasts, and I've used the word targets inappropriately. They are forecasts within the plan, and they fit the context of the growth plan, which really looks at accommodating as much of a population we can within our existing areas in order to preclude the need to expand beyond our urban boundaries. So that's the overall objective of the growth plan, and we can do that within our, our boundaries that we have.
Okay, so it did exclude Saw Wet and Glen Abbey when we did the official plan? Just to be clear.
Saw Wet was identified as an area that could redevelop, and there are specific policies within the plan that identified as a special policy area with an opportunity for development, subject to a very comprehensive study of all the lands in the area, which is very distinct from Glen Abbey. Glen Abbey is designated as private open space. That is its final use in terms of the context of the plan. It provides for no alternative uses to it except the addition of the hotel. So the treatment of the two are very different. If you look at the philosophy of your livable Oakville plan, it identified all the areas where we could and should grow, which are the six growth areas within the town. It then identified some special areas, such as the D and D lands, for example, and the OTMH hospital site, where we knew we could, we were going to accommodate some growth in those areas. And it actually identified what should be the maximum or the intended floor area of those areas of the density. And then, in addition, it identified corridors that we needed to study to accommodate additional growth. And lastly, it identified future development areas and the, of the lands around, including the Saw Wet lands, the Deerfield lands in that area, were identified as a potential future development on the basis solely of their comprehensive study.
But it wasn't, it wasn't zoned for any development at all in our official plan, since we said we had enough zone, enough land zoned to meet our numbers to 2031, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It was not zoned because the comprehensive studies had not been undertaken. They needed to be undertaken first to understand what would be the appropriate zoning on those lands.
Thank you, and thank you for that.
Counselor Shinnah.
Mr. Simeoni, can you, you had mentioned the dates of the three reports for the Glen Abbey, which the first two you mentioned that were beginning of 2017 or somewhere in the next month or two? Is that my understanding? And the, the cultural heritage one is at the end of the year? Can you?
Through you, Your worship, to the council. So yes, in fact, we're looking at the first quarter, beginning of second quarter, for all of the studies to be kind of landing in a draft format. Of course, as I've said before, and it's in the staff report, you'll note that there's also the associated implementation tools that may be necessary, depending on what's identified in the study. So that will be an additional timeframe to the completion of the draft reports.
Counselor Knoll.
Thank you, Your worship. Can you explain the nature of the concern with respect to planning fees that were administered? That's part of the appeal? I don't think I've ever heard of that before.
Through you, Mayor Burton, the, the essence of the appeal by Club Link was that the fees that accompany its application were excessive in light of the position that the town was taking, that the application was incomplete. Our position to date has been that, notwithstanding that the application is incomplete, there's still an obligation on, on staff to, to review the documentation and do some work. But as I said in, in my remarks, we don't expect that appeal will be pursued until the completeness issue has been determined by the board.
It sounds kind of frivolous, but the, what is the nature of the fees? What were the fees? Do you know what they were?
Through you, Your worship, to the council, I believe the fees were in the neighborhood of $194,000.
Property of that size, a company of that size, I'm surprised they'd be complaining about that. But anyway, thank you.
Counselor Elgar.
Maybe, maybe help us recall what happened back in the early 2000s related to our official plan and how we did taxation rules. We used to have highest and best use for golf courses, I believe. Maybe you can expand on that? And I believe there was some case where, I believe it was actually Club Link that took Glen Abbey to the board to change it because they, they didn't want to pay highest and best use, they wanted to pay on rounds of golf or something. Somebody expand on that?
Yes, you're correct. I don't remember the, the date. It was sometime in the early 2000s. Club Links did reach an agreement through negotiation, and the ARB found that golf courses should not be taxed on the highest and best use, but on the income that the property makes. That was a precedent-setting decision that is now applied to golf courses across the province.
What does highest and best use mean?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Highest and best use would be the most the property could be used for, taking into consideration the current official plan policies and any potential amendments that could be considered favorably. So normally, what they do when they look at that is that the, they would take what it could develop as and discount it, its value down, if there was no actual approvals for that. So it's a, an estimate of what it could be used for.
Okay, that's very interesting. I thank you for that. Thanks.
Any other questions, counsel? Counselor Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Simeoni, you mentioned the studies that will be coming back later on in the year. How does the peer review, could you take the peer review process? Is that concurrent? Is it after?
Through you, Your worship, to the council. So normally, the peer review is something we would see on, on a development application, and we would have identified either terms of reference that could be peer reviewed, or the actual, in addition to that, the actual results of the studies would be peer reviewed by an independent third party, provide that lens in an approval process. In this case, we're not anticipating any peer reviews. We've, we've engaged the consultants in accordance with the terms of reference that were outlined to council in the planning staff reports, and we're anticipating simply receiving those results back.
So the letter talks about the process has not, the process has not occurred, and for the reasons you stated?
Well, I think there may be two things here. The letter that's appended to the staff report deals specifically with the, the terms of reference that were being negotiated with the, the applicant, not, I was referring to, in my earlier statement, to the studies that the town's undertaking. Some of those studies were evolving to a point where we needed to identify terms of reference that were supposed to have been peer reviewed, but they never evolved to that state. The dialogue ended with the passage of the interim control bylaw.
Appreciate the clarification.
So before we go to Counsel Hutchins, I just want to make sure that we clarified that in the, in the event that the application is finally complete and before us properly, before the town, at that time, the applicant's studies might perhaps be subjected to a peer review organized by the town, right?
Your worship, that's correct.
So Counselor Giddings, have we cleared that up? Counselor Hutchins.
Thank you. I'm, I'm a little confused about this business, about Club Link's choosing to go to a lower standard, so it reduced its taxes on its lands. Could you explain that again?
Yes, in the, any, any tax, well, tax decisions are open to review. Any taxpayer can appeal to the Assessment Review Board. And in the, around 2010, I believe, it might have been around 2000, somewhere in that era, a, a large appeal was concluded, where Club Links had
where Club Link's had led a, an appeal to the ARB to assess golf courses, not on the basis of the highest and best use of the land, but on the, the income that the property makes. So it's assessed based on the income of the golf club, not on the highest and best use. That was a precedent-setting decision, and now all golf courses across the province are based on, the taxes that they pay are based on the income that the golf course makes, not on the highest and best use value of the property.
I see, so they've been, they legally got the land changed so, to a lower valuation so they could reduce their property taxes? Is that a good characteristic?
It's, it's assessment. There is a relationship between assessment and the value that you, and the taxes that you pay. Those two things are linked. But yes, the assessment is based on the income rather than on the highest and best use of that, of that property. And depending what the income of the golf course is, that would cause the assessment to be less than the highest and best use of the property. I think that would be the case most of the time.
Okay, so my question then, I guess, to, to Mr. Carr, is if for some reason Glen Abbey finally gets permission, can we go back to get the back taxes that they avoided by claiming that the, they were only going to have a golf course, and there's golf courses, it should only be charged on their income? Because they've avoided, effectively, they've avoided the...
Through you, Mayor Burton, I don't, I don't think that that's a realistic prospect for the town of Oakville. The issue before the ARB is what's the appropriate way to assess the value of golf courses? And Club Link was leading a series of appeals, and it was the leading case, and there's different ways of assessing the value of golf courses. I believe initially Club Link was taking the position it should be a capitalized leasehold rate, however that works, and in the end, it was resolved between Club Link and the, and IMPAC, the provincial assessment group, that the appropriate way to go forward was to assess the value of the golf course on the basis, as Mr. Gord LeLond has indicated, on the basis of income. And so that formed the basis for how golf courses would be assessed on a go-forward basis. That really has very little to do with what is the appropriate response by the town to a development application that's before it, once the town has all of the, the information and study work done.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Counselor, is that the end of your inquiry in that area? Because I think we're wandering away from the, the subject of the report. Thank you. I'll look over here for other questions, and I'll look over here. All right, then I'll look for a motion to receive the information. Counselor Laffworth and Counselor Luschina, all those in favor? Post, if any, thank you. And I need a move in secondary for consideration of the confirmatory bylaw. Counselor Knoll and Counselor Elgar, all in favor? And that's carried as well. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention. I hope this update to the council and the community is helpful. I, one of the reasons I called the meeting was I grew concerned that it had been too long since, well, my main concern was I was beginning to hear things being said in the community that were contradictory to what I knew the facts to be, and I thought it'd be a good idea if we could get everybody on the same page. And so I thank everyone for their time and attention, and we are adjourned.